And as a county, we just ask your blessing upon the services that the county offers, those that volunteer for fire and for ambulance. And our maintenance personnel is there out there taking care of the county business during the day. And administrative personnel is there keeping us straight in the paperwork area of the county. We just ask that you bless all our citizens and keep them well and healthy. We ask that you be with our military and bless them as they protect this country so that we can enjoy the freedoms that we have. Father, we just thank you for all of this and ask your blessing upon this meeting that we will act in a professional manner and in ways that benefit the county. We're asking in Christ's name. Amen.
What would it be to define the United States of America into a model which sustains one nation under God, individual liberty and justice?
All right, now we'll have a study on the agenda. Hopefully you've all had a chance to look at the agenda. Any changes, amendments, whatever to the agenda? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Reverend Joe? Ms. Adams, yes?
Can we amend the agenda to include a closed session?
Writing any objections to amending the agenda to include a closed session? We hear a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a closed session.
Sir.
Mr. Hips has moved to approve the agenda with addition of a closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Reverend Jones is seconding. Any further discussion? Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
Aye.
Mr. Woskill?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
I vote aye also. The agenda is approved as amended. All right, before we start with the citizens' comment period, the last two meetings, things got, I was reminded that I didn't allow things to happen in a meeting that probably shouldn't have. But our board policy, "The board will permit no behavior which does not comply with this policy. Prohibited conduct at meetings shall include." And I know there's not that many people here, but there are probably people listening at home that may want to come to a meeting at some other point. Specifically, little things that have been allowed to carry on are number 10, standing in the back or side aisles of the boardroom, as long as there are sufficient seats available. Except for law enforcement personnel, is prohibited. Persons that attend to the meeting, addressing the board while members of the board are considering any motion, resolution, or ordinance preliminary to the vote on the same except at all this, at the discretion of the chairman, is prohibited. Just can't burst out in a board meeting and say, "Hey, you know, I object to that," or "I want to talk about that." Item 12, any person addressing comments or questions to someone other than the chairman is prohibited. And wearing hats, caps, or other types of headgear are prohibited. So I just wanted to remind people, both the board, myself, and the public, that those are prohibited items because the last two meetings, we did have some of that go on, and I shouldn't have allowed it. All righty, citizen public comment period. This time is provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen should be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. And I don't have a list?
No.
All right, let's go on to appearances then. These scheduled times are provided by the board to allow citizens and organizations outside the county government to discuss matters of importance with the board. First up, Sheriff Richardson has requested to appear before the board to discuss body worn cameras by his department. So Sheriff, what you got? Are you going to give us a demo?
Nothing. Just get a, I didn't bring you the actual.
Chairman, Board, thank you all for letting me speak. I kind of briefed you all a little bit throughout the past months that this would be coming. And here we are today. Basically, what we have now at the sheriff's office is over the past five or six years, we implemented the body worn camera program. And the body worn cameras we have right now are, their brand is Axon, which is the same as what the price list you'll see when you open your folder. We own the cameras we have right now, all right? So whenever one breaks, something happens to it, we've got to buy a new one. We do all our data, everything, since we buy it, it's theirs. The problem is Axon was the last company that did that. No other companies do it. Therefore, this is the next step, is you've got to go into a contract agreement with the companies. And Axon is the one we've been dealing with for a while, and it's also the one that is probably what we found beneficial in price wise as well. It's a five-year contract, and there's two ways that you could pay if you were to agree with it. It's a total of $106,000, $106,906, over a five-year period. And it can be paid, as you can see, it's broken up, and I believe it's the yearly fee of $21,381.36. When we started this program, it was started for transparency, not only for the citizens, but it also has covered, I don't know how many times of complaints I've gotten called on deputies, that prove that the deputies did nothing wrong, and unfortunately, the citizen just interpreted what the situation was in a different way. Once we reviewed the body camera footage with them, they understood it a little bit different as well. So it's transparency for everybody. It helps out in the court with the Commonwealth attorney. It shows exactly what happened when we get on scene. And it's, again, it's not up for interpretation. The victim speaks for itself, and it stands on its own merit. So I don't want to take a step back in time and go away from them. One of the things I ran on was transparency, and it's kind of hard to do that if we do take the body cameras away from the officers. So I ask you to approve this amount. Again, it's going to be a, get us through the year up. Yes, sir. March twenty twenty-nine, if we were to sign it. This also covers any cameras that get repairs, we break them, things like that. We don't have to pay for another camera. We automatically get the cameras from Axon. So all that is included within this price. It gives 10 gigabyte of data. They've already done a research project of how much data we use, so that should cover everything we, that we use, as long as we get the Commonwealth attorney to go in and delete videos, once they, you see that they're not, you need it for any reason. Any questions?
Any questions for the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Reverend Jones?
I think an environment that we live in today is a no-brainer, that we have to have it for our deputies as well as the citizens.
Completely agree.
Chair, is this money you have in the budget something we're...
I wish that I could say that I did have it in the budget, but that's why I'm about for you all today to graciously ask for you all to be able to fund this for us. Yeah, so again, you can pay it all upfront, you can pay it all mostly in the back end, or you can pay it yearly, however you all see fit that fits the narrative for the budget of the county.
Mr. Chairman, is it any advantage of paying it upfront? Is it any more of a discount, doesn't change?
I don't think it changes at all. I can certainly ask Reverend Jones, I think it's a great question, if you pay upfront, if you can get a better discount. Oh, yes, it is. Reverend Jones, if you look at our front page, it says you'll save roughly $4,000, $4,600 a month if you would have paid all upfront. A year, sorry, a year. Yeah.
So how soon could you receive these and they become operational?
So we, we're up and running now, we're just, they're starting to fall apart daily. So we have them up and running. I'd imagine that would happen to us by the end of the month. The only thing is, so the difference in what these body cameras do, so right now, they get a manual, if you, if we go to the scene of crime, whatever it may be, we've got to go back, manually put that into the system and download it. And again, if they're downloading, it's got to sit on that body camera stand until it's done. So they may get a call while it's happening, and they won't be able to wear it back out. This new system they have now, as soon as the deputy gets back to the office, it automatically starts downloading to the system. They don't have to manually go in and do it, it does it for them. So getting the cameras won't be the problem, it's getting set up to get the software program put in. It may, I don't have a timeframe for that, I'm sure it's going to be pretty soon. Again, I don't exactly have that date, but the physical camera, we can get pretty quickly.
What do we want to consider right now?
Well, I guess what we want to consider right now is approval of the 60-month contract, which would mean an outweigh of $23,193.30 a year for the next five years. And I was just about to ask Ms. Adams, which count does we come out of?
I did have a question. Once this becomes effective, when is the expectation for the first payment?
So to my knowledge, what they have told us is, is by the end of the contract.
Okay.
So they basically explained to us that it can be paid all upfront, it can be paid yearly, or it can be paid on the back end of it. Obviously, I'm sure they would rather it be upfront, but that's what they expressed to us, whatever is at the pleasure of the board, it needed to happen to make sure this happened. You know, for instance, they said if you could only do $100,000 this year, and you need to do $6,000 next year to meet the requirements of what you needed for the budget purposes, that they could do that. So I think they're, they're very easy to work with, and as long as I, we have a contract to sign with them, I think they're happy.
I think Ms. Adams, where Ms. Adams might be coming from, is it something we need to consider payout of this year's budget, or is it something we can make our first payment out of next year's budget in June?
Yeah, it's something I would have to ask them, I don't want to speak for them until I, you know, ask them that question. Again, as long as we have the contract signed with them, is what they explain to me is they're fine with getting the payment on the back end of it, as long as the contract's signed, and we'll pay it.
I guess the motion we need then would be to authorize you to sign the contract.
Up to this amount?
Yeah.
And then we could get the payment details, and it may be something we could work at a budget work session.
Mr. Woskill?
I make that motion?
Okay, Mr. Woskill's made the motion, we authorize the sheriffs to enter into this contract not to exceed $106,906.80 for five years, meaning $23,000, whatever this, $21,000 a year. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter has made a second. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, so are we saying that we will consider trying to save the county the $4,000?
Okay, we'll work that out. Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Woskill?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter? I vote aye also.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Just a quick question, if they do, Ms. Adams expressed it, or they said that we can't wait till July 1st, is, do you still want to go forward with the contract at that point?
I think you're, they are authorized, and go ahead and approve the contract.
Okay.
And that we have to determine where the money will come from at a work session.
Great. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. It's something that unfortunately you need, and we want to protect you and the citizens.
Well, like I said, this is best for everybody. Thank you.
All right, next up is the electoral board. Mr. Patricia Morton, registrar, is required to appear before the board to discuss the findings of the precinct review committee, and I see Mr. Selz is her surrogate in this minute.
Right. Lannis Selz, Secretary of the Atmacs County Electoral Board. I'm representing the precinct review committee tonight, which consisted of the electoral board, Ms. Morton, registrar, Supervisor Woskill, and Supervisor Jones, to look at the question of potentially merging some precincts. As we're finding out even tonight, there are certain budget items that we don't have a lot of control over, is things would be, things like increases that the county has in the cost of employee benefits. The electoral board's facing that as the parties go away from conventions and go to a required primary every year. We used to count on about one and a half elections per year, now that's going to be two, and budgets will reflect that. So we're, it behooves us to look anywhere we can for opportunities to reduce the budget by making appropriate changes. And one of those may be in reducing the number of election day voting precincts from nine to seven, which would realize savings every year in both operating costs and equipment. We have five districts in the county, and we're allowed to have up to, you know, 5,000 voters in each district. So at a minimum, the county would have to have five voting districts. We are, and each of those districts would have no more than about 2,500 people in the way we are now, in terms of registered voters. So we had considered, we got together with the board members to consider what we might do, what the most effective way to, to be able to reduce the budget and yet still run effective and efficient elections. And one of those would be to combine the Chap and Spout Spring precincts together, and another for AG into Oakville. Those are the two smallest precincts that we have now. In a, in something like our special election that came up two weeks ago, we would have, we had less than 60 people vote at each one of those places. So the, we looked at what the best way to do that would be, and what some of the reasoning behind doing that might be. At AG, for example, out in the Wild Bay area, when it's, the facility really needs some serious upgrade if we're going to keep running it. The officers of election and the voters were in there in gloves and scarves and jackets with a frozen porta potty out back, and the, they need some, some maintenance before we could do that again.
Mr. Selz?
Yeah.
Can you put, could you advance the slides?
I don't know. I think the board can understand more, yeah, there, we see what we're talking about up there.
Go to the fourth one. There you go.
There you go.
Thanks, Aze.
So we don't, we don't have those kind of problems at Chap. We have a very nice facility there at Central Baptist Church, so the quality of the facility is not a, not an issue. But if you go to the next slide, the, if you look at the number of registered voters affected in each case, we have 610 registered voters at Chap, and 772 at AG. If we combined those respectively into Spout Spring and Oakville, we'd have 2,615 Spout Spring and 2,580 at Oakville. And we feel that we could handle, handle that, those number of voters without having to increase staffing at either one of those. So the number of workers that we eliminated at each of those precincts, we would not have to have a net add at any of the others. We found, by the way, along those lines, that our electronic poll books, which we used for the very first time, which you guys approved, thank you very much, earlier this year, have worked well. They make the, all of the poll workers were saying, wow, this makes things easier, makes things quicker, makes things more accurate, just like they're advertised to do. So that's going to allow us to, to continue to run with a higher volume and not have to add additional personnel into the budget. We also find, we used to have, some of these precinct names are 100 years old. We've had these precincts around the county, it's been a long time since we've actually eliminated one, back when precincts were basically walking distance from people's houses, with one election per year on one day. It was important that the voting precinct be right there where people are. Now, you have a month and a half to vote at the, in mathematics, anytime that you want to. You can vote by mail, or a lot of times in this day and time, people would drive right by the combined voting precinct five times during a week. So it's, it's not like they were as isolated as they used to be. At Chap, 66% of the registered, the people who voted, voted on election day. At AG, 52% voted on election day, the rest voted early in one way or another. So these are the number of voters that would, that would actually, on election day, instead of going to a Chap precinct, would go to Spout Spring, or instead of going to AG precinct, would go to, to Oakville. Of course, the, the savings, go to the next slide, the savings would be in the annual expense, of course, of hiring people, maintaining equipment, and that sort of thing. We do need to, if we're going to use AG again, we do need to do some improvement. The battery needs painting, and the, the electric doesn't work very well, the baseboard heaters don't work, and some, that, some of that's going to need to be upgraded. So it's a, it's a net cost savings of the voting machines, the wages, the ballots, the different ballot types we have to have, and so on. And we'll talk about that just a little more detail in a minute. Of course, some voters, if they're voting on election day, would have to travel further from their homes. We took a compass and drew and found out who the most highly effective person in the county would be, and he's sitting right here on your board. Mr. Enkle lives right at the end of Chap precinct, and he would have an extra 12 miles to drive instead of going from Central Church to Spout Spring. That's the worst case. So you have an example of how that would work. You know, given, again, given the, the amount that people drive these days, and the fact that they can vote early for a month and a half or by mail, you guys, of course, have the say over whether the savings that we would have in this balances or overbalances the fact that the precincts are going to be farther from people's houses. That's a, a call that you would have to make on, with community input. And in some cases, the voting precinct is the last vestige of when that area was actually a community. It had a school, and a doctor, and a post office, and all the other things we used to have. You know, we don't realize how local things used to be. When I was on the school board, we, we came up, we realized that the Atmacs County School Board still owned the titles to 80 locations in Atmacs County that had schools between the years 1870 and 1920. And those were still on the books, not with any value, but on the tax map that belonged to Atmacs County School Board. There were, Mr. Jones could probably tell me more accurately than, than I can remember, but we probably had, you know, 20 post offices in the county. They were all over the place. And the last vestige of those is the names of the voting precincts that we have today. So that's, that's a kind of passing of an era that would have to be considered when we eliminate one. But again, that's up against the changed habits of people, the changed landscape, the change in transportation, the change in, in voting laws, and everything else as to whether that's an issue. So next slide, or that slide, yeah. We're just looking at the, the changes that we would make just by having, if we made these changes by April, and didn't have to run the June primary at those two, we'd save $1,500. And FY '26, we'd save $5,300. Those are just operating budget numbers. The, the larger savings are in the capital equipment that we wouldn't have to buy, when we replace the vocabulators, and when we buy electronic poll books. Then the, the savings get up into the, the region of $25,000 or so. So also, the AG property isn't used for anything else, and so the county would have that, that they could use for something, and sort of sell or dispose of, in whatever way they saw fit. So we would have a, a reduction in the amount of maintenance we would have to do, and the logic and accuracy testing we have to do before every election, and from a budget standpoint, there's a lot to be said for it. There's a sheet, we didn't put it up here because it's too detailed, but I, you have in front of you, that's a spreadsheet that, that talks about the, the savings in operating costs, and then capital equipment purchases that we would have. And so I won't go over those in detail. They're broken down into savings by fiscal year, ongoing savings, and then long-term savings that we would not have to spend if you to replace and maintain equipment. So I think everybody on the committee agreed that this was worth moving forward with, that there were no impediments to us doing it. It's going to need, there's a process to go through, obviously, to, to do this, and we, we talked in general about what that would be. And on the last page, there's got to be a public hearing. If we want to do this and implement this before the June primaries, which we don't have to do, there's no rush, you just save the money of having to, to operate them. If we do that, we'd have to have a public hearing by the February 18th, a supervisory meeting. And then we'd have a public comment period begin as soon as possible. You guys would have to update the ordinance, the decrees, where the voting precincts are, and those things would have to be done by, for 18, 60 days before the, before the primary election. And we would have to, then we would have to mail out to all registered voters, and that, all the affected voters, a notice that their voting location would be changing. So if we decide to go forward with this, or if you guys decide to go forward with it, the recommendation of the committee, we begin immediately to go ahead and do this. So I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions, or from anyone, or any comments from the other members of the precinct review committee.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Selz, thank you so much for the work that you all have done, was very informative, the meeting that I attended. My feeling is that because of early voting, mail voting, I mean, I can speak for AG, I'm very familiar, it's in my district, I think it would be unwise to pour more money into that facility. So I definitely would be in favor of letting that group come to Oakville to be able to vote. People come to Walmart two, three, four times a week, so it's not like it's as inconvenient for people with vehicles now. And I appreciate you sharing the history of the importance of these locations, but I think things have changed. And in this, this environment, I feel like it would be unwise to pour any money into that facility in AG. And how many people voted in the last election there? Did you say 60?
Yeah, let me turn back to that. At AG, 200, let's see, how many were there?
293.
We didn't actually have 293, how many voters did we have?
The 265 that's on the slides was from the November election. And being a presidential, that's about as high as AG general sees. Lannis had said earlier, there was about 60 people.
Yeah, that's the number I was looking for.
About right for the special election.
Yeah, because I was expecting more in a national election.
Which was dismal everywhere.
Right. Yeah, but it was 60 on the off year, not...
Yes, yes. And this, and a special election is about an off a year as you get. A lot of people are still confused about primaries, and we get low turnout at primaries, but for a special election, it's even, only very politically active people know. Because when you only have, for example, in this last case, we couldn't even begin the election process until December 13th, when the, the state board said, oh, we're going to have an election, look, the seat's been vacated, so we've got to do it. We only had a total of three weeks to, to let people know what was going on, it was a notice in the paper, everything we could do, but still, there was a lot of people that said, I didn't know this. So it turned out to light, of course. You'll probably have something akin to that again in June, and then you'll have a full vote election in November, the governor's election, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Speaking of being the farthest one from Spout Springs, I remember when I voted in the special election, I was number, voter number 12, and this was like 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So it's... So it's...
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
I think personally, this is a no-brainer. It speaks for itself. Well, one thing I would like to know is, the existing poll workers, are they going to be needed?
They'll be in the pool. What we do is, we have a pool of workers that is, we have to, we have to replenish every year. In other words, we'll have to declare in February who the poll workers will be. And typically, we have to go and recruit because of losses of people that have quit or passed on or moved away. We typically have to recruit some. We simply won't be recruiting those folks. So we'll have a smaller pool of workers for the county as a whole that we will, we will work. So there will be a net reduction in the number of people we'll be paying to, to do this. We will, if someone says, I'm interested in being a poll worker still, for example, somebody that has been working at AG for years, we will have them, we'll take any citizen who comes and says, hey, I want to qualify to be an officer of election, be sworn in, we'll have them in our pool. But unless we've got a place to use them in an election, we won't use them during a given election.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we set a public hearing to discuss the issue of closing Chap and AG precincts.
Reverend Jones, if I may, I'd like to make an amendment to your motion that include direction for the county attorney to begin work on changes to the ordinance that will be required if we make the move. You accept that?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Jones has accepted amendment to his motion to include that the county attorney began drafting a new ordinance. Reverend Jones has made the motion to set the public hearing at the February 18th meeting for closure of these two voting precincts, precincts, and authorizing the county attorney to redraft the ordinance. Is there a second? Mr. Carter is second.
I saw you nod your head, that's why.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Mr. Carter, how say you?
Mr. Hips.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Wescott.
Aye.
I vote aye also. Thank you. Very well presented. All right, next up, Ms. Vicki Phelps. Treasurer has requested privilege for the board to provide an update on our 2024 tax collections. I vote 2025.
That started, well, actually, what was collected in December, we'll go toward the FY '25, but what I'm reporting on is what was collected for year of 2024, which just ended December the 5th. So as of, well, as of Friday, we had in real estate, collected approximately 96% of real estate taxes. Approximately $8,891 has been collected so far. In personal property, we've collected about 87%. And then public service, which is once-a-year taxes, actually 100% of those have been collected. Delinquent tax tickets have gone out, and so we are starting to see lots of people coming in and paying. They've either forgotten or set aside or whatever, so we're becoming very busy again with penalty and interest having to be paid now. I usually do not put DMV stops on personal property taxes until I've given them ample time to try to get in by February the 7th to pay their personal property taxes, because at that point, they're paying their taxes, their penalty and interest, and then when you apply a DMV stop, that also adds $45 more. So I try to give ample time to come in and get that paid before tacking on another $45, you know, payment. But they will be applied to the personal property. And I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with a DMV stop, but what that does is, we work with DMV, and if you have personal property taxes, we would apply a stop, and you are not allowed to go and buy your vehicle tags, or if you were to buy a new vehicle, you wouldn't be able to put tags on it until those personal property taxes are paid in full. Once they are paid in full, then I can, my office staff can lift that stop. And we require, if you have a DMV stop, you have to pay in cash. So that is to protect, if we were to pay in a check and your check come back, we've lifted your stop and then we're out of that money. So when you have a DMV stop, if someone questions you, yes, you have to pay cash or a money order to get, to get those taxes and get, to get that stop lifted. So just thought I would explain that. We have a lot of people that have never had a DMV stop, and they're like, what is it? And I'm like, you don't want to know, but I try to explain it. We have also, when we send out our tax tickets, we also receive a tremendous amount of letters back or tax tickets. So this year, so far, we have tried to readdress, which that requires staff to research on the internet, try to find different addresses, about 1,200 tax tickets that have been returned to us. But that, of course, is more postage, more time staff has to spend looking for addresses and trying to find if they've moved or for some reason they're sent back because they're deceased, we try to find who the estate is under. So it just requires a little, a lot of time, actually, so. Any questions about our tax collections? Those, like I said, those delinquent tickets did go out on January the 13th, so we're seeing a huge influx now on people coming in. And I would also like to provide estimated state we collect in our office. So for this year, we've collected $322,566 in estimated state, and then we send that to the Treasurer of Virginia. That has dropped some, and that's due to state is now, they really want you to pay it online instead of coming in and making those payments. So people who pay a large amount, I think we are seeing that they are beginning to pay that online. So last year, we collected over $500,000 in a year, where this year, we've dropped to 322. So we feel like that's what it is, is that some of these larger places are, are beginning to pay it online. I did receive my letter, and I think Mr. Hinkle and Ms. Adams, you received a letter from our Auditor of Public Accounts, just letting us know that, that the results was in compliance with the, the constitutional offers regarding annual collections. So that was all received and everything was in compliance with that. Our dog tags, we've collected approximately $3,200 in dog tags, which they go on sale the first of October, and will run throughout the year, but we do, I see an increase where people are learning more about the dog tags and are coming in and trying to make sure that they are, you know, following the regulations for that, or buying kennel tags, however it is. Abatements, we've completed about 536 abatements this year, or in 24. And that's just corrections to either the real estate or personal property by the Commissioner of Revenue. So there's a process that they do, but then we have to turn around in our office also. There's been 344 supplements, and that is things that are like missed possibly in the assessments, and then somehow the Commissioner, I'm not sure what she does, but she goes and finds out, I missed this vehicle. So they have to do a supplement. So in that case, we would have to turn around and send another tax bill to these people to let them know that it was missed in the annual or the semi-annual, but you still need to pay this fee. So we've sent out about 344 supplemental tax tickets. DMV stops, I mentioned, this in 24, we collected for the county's administrative fees, over $27,000. That's the administrative fees. Now, DMV received about $34,000. So we do get fees in for, for putting on those stops. So the county does collect, DMV gets $25 per stop, and the county gets 20. So that is some revenue that we're able to bring in through those stops. Bankruptcies, I thought it was worth mentioning, we've had for 24, we've had like 21 new bankruptcies, which that's, that's a lot. We usually get four, five in a year, and we've had 21 this year or so. So right now, we have a total of 83 active bankruptcies. Yeah, so that's, let's see, and then LGIP, which is our, where we have a local government investment program. We invested in them in July of 2023, and we have, we have earned over $1.5 million in interest, not interest, just revenue where we picked up from the interest on that, that investment. So that's been really well, looks like it's still doing well. It has dropped some, but it's still doing very, very well. Our staff is diligently working with getting our reconciliations with Wells Fargo caught up. So we are working with other Treasurers. I've, I've received several Treasurers who are offering to help us. We also received help from Brown Edwards on this. This is a very complex job. I do have an employee who's, who's working on it, but it's something that takes time to learn. She is working on it. And then I have another employee that, when we are slow or whatever for the day, she is also working with her. So I, I know that's a concern, and it is definitely a concern of mine, but we are definitely working, trying to get that process caught up. We continue to work with Sands Anderson to send out delinquent real estate properties where I send to Sands Anderson, that's who handles their auctions. What I do is, if you, I usually wait till you're four years behind, I send it to Sands Anderson. They can either, you can work with Sands Anderson, excuse me, and be put on a payment plan with Sands Anderson, or you can pay it off with Sands Anderson, or it can be auctioned, and Sands Anderson handles that process. That is usually after, I've sent many letters trying to work out a payment plan in Appomattox County, because it's so much cheaper if you would pay with a payment plan in Appomattox, because I don't charge the extra fees. If you choose to work with Sands Anderson, you're going to pay their fees. So I try my best to get people to set up payment plans within our county, if at, if at all they will sometimes, but I do have some that will end up making a payment plan with Sands Anderson, and so they will just send me checks as they get the money, so. But they are, we are in the process of getting some ready to send to them for that. I was also successful in collecting some delinquent personnel property taxes by using the General District Court. I issued warrants and debt. We issued about 37 warrant and debts, and before they had to go to court, I had 12 delinquent bills paid in full, and I've had six that have, have began a payment plan. The out-of-state warrant and debts, I was not able to contact or I got no, no, I got anything from them. But within our county, we did, we were able. And then judgment was placed on the ones that either did not come in or did not set a payment plan or work with us, and so that can be filed at Circuit Court so that it can, if they go to do something in Circuit Court, then it will be a judgment there for that. That is all I have as far as just a few updates on our activities. I'm welcome to answer any questions if I can, or if you've got any comments and need me to look at anything, be glad to answer anything.
Any questions on the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
Ms. Phelps, did I understand you correctly saying that from the interest, was $1 million, X amount of dollars?
That's what we've earned on the, on the LGIP, yeah.
And this is what, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Was?
Well, he, he brought it to my attention, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's great.
And Ms. Adams and I worked together.
Yeah.
And we invested that money, and it has definitely paid off, that's definitely.
Yes. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update.
And, and when are you and Ms. Adams opening your own investment firm so we can figure out?
[laughing]. [inaudible].
All right, next, a move into action items, which the first one is Commissioner Revenue refund request. Ms. Sarah Henderson, Commissioner Revenue is requesting the following to be paid from the 1209-5803 refunds. First one, refund Barbara L. Mullins, $72 for 2024 personal property taxes. She was erroneously assessed. Number two, refund Deonte Trent, $204.14 for 2023 personal property taxes. He paid the first half of the taxes on a vehicle that was moved to Amelia County in October of 2022. Staff recommends considering the above refunds, transfer by consent, $276.14 from the general fund, and appropriate to 1209-5803. No new local funds are required. Is there a motion? Mr. Reverend Jones has moved to authorize a transfer. Is there a second?
Second.
Carter has second. Mr. Wescott. Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
I vote aye also. Transfer is authorized. All right, next, I thought we approved this. Guess not. All right, Board of Supervisors 2025 meeting schedule, at the January 2, 2025 organization meeting. The board set the 2025 meeting schedule for the third Monday of each month at 6:00 PM. If that Monday is a legal holiday, the meeting shall be scheduled the third Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Staff recommends adoption of the attached 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting schedule. Is there a motion to adopt the 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting schedule as presented?
So.
Carter has moved. Mr. Wescott, second. Discussion?
Mr. Carter. Does it end the bylaws if there's, you know, some federal related?
Cancellation or something on that Tuesday that we just advanced to the Wednesday then? Or? I don't remember.
No, it's in the bylaws, it would be the following Monday.
Oh, okay. All right.
All righty. What say you, Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Wescott.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
I vote aye also. Supervised meeting schedule approved. Next is the FY 2026 budget work session calendar. Please review the draft Board of Supervisors budget work session calendar and consider approval of suggested dates and times. Staff recommends that we adopt the amended FY 2026 budget work session calendar as presented or amended or unauthorized staff to advertise it. Has everyone had a chance to review the calendar?
I'm not available on the second Tuesday of each month. I don't know if it's followed on the second Tuesday.
The 11th of February, the 11th of March. Those are the only two I know.
I may just be a little late. We can't change.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hips.
These are always intentionally overscheduled, too. It seems like a lot, a lot of times, we'll cancel a few of them. So it could be that some of those are canceled.
I also have a conflict on the second Tuesday, but I just kind of, I mean, I don't go into my conflict.
I also have a conflict on the first Tuesday, but it's okay. Any further discussion? Is there a motion for approval of adoption of the FY 2026 budget work session calendar? Reverend Jones has moved to adopt the FY 2026 budget calendar? Oh, with Mr. Wescott?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
Don't matter. I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter, seconds. Any further discussion? What say you, Mr. Wescott?
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Mr. Chairman, in, in looking at our calendar, the joint school board work session, we realized today that the school board, we had asked them to schedule at 6:00, but I think it's on their calendar, 5:30.
Well, Mr. Hips, that'll show up at 6:00, I guess, the first half hour.
So, I mean, I can reach back out to Dr. Bennett. I do know that their board approved it at their last meeting, and they probably advertised it, but maybe we could have snacks first or something, and then have the work session at 6:00. I just wanted to note, take that, that they were... that, that there's a, there's a conflict between the two calendars. We'll make it work.
All right, next. Virginia Department of Historic Resources grant to Carver Price Legacy Museum MOU and transfer funds. The Carver Price Legacy Museum has been awarded a grant from the Department of Historic Resources in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the exclusive support of its education and outreach initiatives. DHR has transferred the grant funds to Amiens County as a local government entity on behalf of the applicant, Carver Price Legacy Museum. Upon transfer of the funds from the county to Carver Price Legacy Museum, the county will have completed its obligations outlined in attached MOU. Staff recommends the authorize, authorize staff to transfer the grant funds of two hundred and eighty-five thousand from the designated Carver Price Legacy Museum Revenue Fund and supplement funds to eighty-one oh five, six thousand seven special projects, and submit the payment of two hundred and eighty-five thousand to the Carver Price Legacy Museum. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
Ms. Adams, you have any, any questions on that, or any comment, as you said?
Basically, the county is the funding conduit for the funds. The Carver Price Museum applied for the, for the funds. And I think it was the Appropriations Committee that actually approved it at the last, last year's work session of the Assembly. And the funds will come through the county and go directly to Carver Price. But we, we don't have any responsibilities of, of project administration other than the funds.
Is there a motion to authorize a transfer of the grant funds from the designated Carver Price Museum Revenue Fund and supplement funds to the eighty-one, eighty-one oh five, six thousand seven special project funds, and submit the check to Carver Price for two hundred and eighty-five thousand?
So moved.
Reverend Jones has moved.
Second.
Carter, second. Any further discussion? Mr. Carter, what do you say?
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Willskill.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
I vote I also. All righty. Okay, next, Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes approval of bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the county Consent Agenda shall be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of any board member prior to the vote of the Consent Agenda. Items removed from the Consent Agenda shall be considered by the board individually in order in which they were removed from the Consent Agenda immediately following consideration of the Consent Agenda. Ready? Any items on the Consent Agenda that need to be talked about or removed, or is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as submitted?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Reverend Jones has moved to accept the Consent Agenda is submitted. Mr. Carter has seconded it. Mr. Willskill.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
I vote also. Consent Agenda is approved. All right, any report from the attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I propose a motion that the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors enter into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 371183 for the limited purpose of discussing or considering the disposition of public legal property where discussion in a meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public property and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 371188 for the limited purpose of consultation with legal counsel regarding specifically legal matters requiring revision of legal advice by such counsel.
All right, is there a motion to go into closed session based on the?
Do we, do we want to do that now, or do we want to move it after our supervisor concerns? In other words, we make the motion, but we do it after supervisor concerns. Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable.
All right, so I'd make a motion that we go into closed session following the criteria stated, code, code stated, after supervisor concerns on the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second there, Mark? All right, Mr. Willskill is second. Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Willskill.
Aye.
I vote I also. So as soon as we finish the additional items on the agenda, after supervisor's concern, we'll go into closed session. All right, then next is the administrative report from the county administrator.
You should have a copy of the report before you with the data from the different departments. There are a couple of items I'd like to notate under the county administrator's report, and that's in the financial audit, something that you need to be thinking about this year, because we had a one-time waiver post-COVID that we did not have to charge the same personal property rate for vehicles versus other personal property. And the state now tells us that both of those rates need to be the same. So I've reached out to the Commissioner of Revenue for the values of those vehicles and personal property, so we can run several scenarios of the board to consider doing the budget work sessions. And as you recall, the personal property rate was three thirty-five, and it was lowered to three dollars per hundred for vehicles only. So that's what we'll be talking about as we work through the budget.
We have to have that done by when?
Um, we'll, we'll approve it at the time of budget approval, so April, April 1st and May end of April. The other thing, the Regional Two Thousand Landfill Authority, I believe is the last meeting, that you approved a settlement agreement, and it was presented before the Campbell County Board of Supervisors, and they denied the expansion, and the settlement was contingent upon acceptance of the zoning expansion. So we'll meet, the authority meets again on the 29th, and we'll be discussing new pro forma, of what that looks like in going forward until 2029 or 2030, when the landfill is projected to close. And our local landfill, we've been trying to make some repairs. We've been trying to install cameras and different things to keep the employees safe. Mr. Rourke and I met with the, with the landfill and convenience center staff on, during their monthly meeting, and we had a discussion about safety and security at the centers, and also the maintenance staff and the landfill operators have been working on trying to make improvements at the centers. We've added some gravel and tried to look at a means to some of the pothole issues. We've got various opinions on that, so we're trying to determine what would be the best fit for those situations. Also, sincere thank you to Malcolm Case and his team at Rockydale Quarries for their contribution of gravel to the Oakville Bruaton Club. I think that was mentioned during the presentation from the Electoral Board that it needed gravel, and it just happened that Rockydale had rented the facility in December and was pleased with the meal that they had there, so they volunteered to donate some rock. And a sincere, staff sincerely appreciates the board granting the extra holiday on Monday, December 23rd. I think everyone enjoyed the extended holiday very much.
Any questions from Ms. Adams on the report? My only comment is it seems like the issue along 460 with the junkyard just seems to be continuing and continuing. Thank you for the report. All right. I guess also, it gives reports and informational items, each of you had in front of you when you came in, is the 2025 Standing Committees. You see your committee assignments there. Facilities Committee is Mr. Carter and myself. Personnel Committee is the entire board. Public Safety Committee is Mr. Hips and myself. Solid Waste Committee, Reverend Jones and Mr. Hips. Central Virginia Planning, Mr. Willskill and Mr. Spencer. And Two Thousand Regional Services Authority is Ms. Adams and Reverend Jones. And the RPA Funding Advisory is Mr. Willskill and Mr. Carter. Do we still have RPA funds, or any RPA funds?
We had to obligate those funds by the end of December, so we have until December 25 to, to expend the funds.
Okay. Any questions on the committee assignments? All right. Also, you have the delinquent status reports for your review. Sands Anderson delinquent tax status reports for your reading enjoyment, and the Appomattox County School Board schedule is also attached for your review. Mr. Willskill, any supervisor concerns?
No.
Reverend Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think it would be in order for this board to commend Carver Price Legacy Museum for their success in acquiring this two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Carver Price, former high school, was pretty much the heartbeat of the black community in Appomattox. And I think it would be very appropriate if, if it's a letter or something, just to commend them for the work that they've done in order to be able to get this grant from the state.
Congratulations, Jim.
We, we can send a letter with a check if that's helpful.
Most of the check.
With them.
With them. Thank you.
All right, you are. Mr. Hips?
Yeah, I'd echo what Mr. Jones said. That's definitely impressive. Ms. Adams beat me to it in sending an email to Dominion. Our outage yesterday and today affected, I think, everybody's district one way or another. It was into town, it was all over the place out in Concord. When Dominion presented here, I told Mr., I think it's Alec Rendon, I told him he was bold to give me, to give us his phone number because of the number of outages we'd had. But I will say, he was very responsive when I called him on vacation on December 23rd, when our power went out repeatedly, and, you know, gave me a status report, which I shared online. But in general, I, I, you know, is it coincidence? Is it weather, whatever? I don't know. But we have had an unacceptable amount of outages on, on Dominion. Just in memory, I know that before Thanksgiving, we had a significant outage on Thanksgiving Day. We had a six-hour outage on December 23rd. We had a significant outage. It was a couple of hours. Lights were on several times, off and on. January, we had an outage. Yesterday, we had a six-hour outage. Two hours into today, some people lost it for eighteen hours for, I mean, you know, from six, five, something yesterday to, you know, maybe two or three or something today. Concord Elementary School, I'm sure the news sheets in Concord is thrilled because they've closed so many times, you know, for outages. So I don't know, I don't know what in the world is going on. I mean, there are, there are obviously certain factors. And, you know, you can't control the weather. And so if it's just, if it's just that quote, "perfect storm of things that have happened," then fine. But I would say after, I can't remember if it was after the 23rd or after the, the January early outage after the ice storm, our lights in our house flicker all the time. So, and I've asked other people in the county, they've had similar experiences. So clearly, something needs, needs to be looked at, whether it's preventative maintenance, inspection of equipment, inspection of lines, I don't know. I know people pay a lot of money every month for their electricity, and we'd like to have it. And, you know, the other thing, the other thing that's a factor is you have a lot of people working at home now. And so, you know, there, there's people, folks scrambling when that sort of situation goes on there, too. So, you know, you, like I said, Ms. Adams already beat me to it in sending the email. I was going to talk to him myself and just see if we can figure something out. Something that would be nice is even having faster response times. Is Farmville the only place they can dispatch from? So, we just need to look into that more and see if there's some help or solution for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, talk about what Mr. Hips was expressing. A friend of mine lives out right there on 460, and his, his and her lights went out, as he said, as he said, a lot of times, too many times. However, he talked to one of the, one of the supervisors with Dominion, and Dominion relayed to him that it's a very miniscule-like piece of equipment that they just put in, it's brand new, and that has caused all of this conflict. So, we'll see.
And do you have any concerns?
No, sir.
All right. I'd like to also say what, you know, about Reverend Jones and Carver Price Museum, it's, they've come a long way. I remember when I first started having interaction with them, it was like, we didn't know if they're going to be open the next day or not. And they, the board, new board, and whatever they've done over there in getting these grants, it's, it's really commendable to the museum. Other than that, I don't have a concern, but I have a, a data boy. I had Samantha Campbell call me this afternoon to express her thanks for the work that Ms. Adams has done. Ms. Campbell is one of the CASA workers, and before we changed things at DSS, she said that CASA had just terrible problems getting DSS to cooperate on different clients with CASA, and she wouldn't get any response from DSS, so she would call Ms. Adams. And when Ms. Adams got involved, then the former director of DSS would call her back, and they would work on the things. And since the new interim director and Ms. Adams, or Ms. Adams and then the new interim director that, that CASA required, the, the things that CASA needs from DSS are happening, and she was very thankful for that, and called me to express that. So, there's a koodoo for you, Ms. Adams, in your new DSS administration.
Thank you.
All right. If that's all the supervisor's concern, then we will move into closed session.